County Board of Supervisors Workshop Meeting to Order. First, we'll have Mr. Smithers, can you let people know how they can attend remotely?
Yes, Madam Chair. During the public comment period, if you wish to speak from home, you can use Zoom to raise your hand, or if you call in, simply hit press, press the star nine on your phone and we'll pick you up. Thank you very much.
A few introductions before we get started. To my far left is Mr. David Williams, District One Supervisor. Next to him is Mr. Tom Berry, District Two Supervisor. Next to him, our County Administrator, Mr. Ned Smithers, myself, Karen Carmack for District Five. Next to me, Mr. Mike Byerly for District Three. Next to him, Mr. Bill Cox for District Four. I know. And next to him, our Assistant County Attorney, Eric Lansing. Okay, if we can stand and Mr. Cox, if you can lead us in the pledge, and Mr. Williams, the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear my Father, thank you for another beautiful day in Powhatan County and all the blessings we enjoy. Amen.
All right, moving along, any requests to postpone or amend tonight's agenda?
I can go free, Madam Chair.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We will now move on to our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and full address for the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes, or if you're speaking as a group, for a group, five minutes.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman. I'm from seventeen twenty-seven Theresa Lane. I'd like to comment that a couple of weeks ago, I found out they changed the rules on this highway funding bill called the Federal Infrastructure Raise Program. They changed the rules two weeks ago to include sidewalk funding and pedestrians and rural counties. And I would be, and the program was like where it's a minimum five million dollar grant. And I'm curious, what, could Powhatan try going after a raise grant to improve Huguenot Road, or Page Road, or Mill Road, and possibly add shoulders to it, and a sidewalk along it? Like, an example is like a Huguenot Road and Huguenot Springs Road are two really bad roads. And I think that would be, it would be interesting to see if, how the raise program would react if Powhatan got a, tried to go after a grant to fix Huguenot Springs or Huguenot Road to add a sidewalk to it and new shoulders, or the raise program could be used to expand the village sidewalks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, my name is Betty Walters. I live in ten thirteen Rocky Ford Road. I have great enthusiasm for the future of this Board of Supervisors. However, I would like to respectfully request that Agenda Item Seven A be deferred until the people of Powhatan County have visibility, time to ask questions, voice their opinions to the Board of Supervisor who represent them. Approval and implementation of this will impact every person owning property in Powhatan, and I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, I'm Kitty Osborne of one oh seven one Dorset Road. Hope you guys are enjoying your little books. Mr. Berry, so great to see somebody at District Two Chair. I'm also speaking on behalf, again, transparency, transparency, communication, the assessment for the real estate. Jamie Timberlake's doing a great job as our Commissioner, and I don't feel as though any of his responsibilities should be taken away from him without the public knowing. You know, he's an elected official, and changes in his job description, or changes in his duties should definitely be publicized. And reassessing property every year, I'm all for coming in and letting me know what my land is valued at. However, I think we, the people that pay the taxes, need to know how you're going to reassess us. What tool are you using? Why are you changing the tool, and who's going to be doing it, so that we can be assured that there's some system of checks and balances in our taxation process? I appreciate the time to speak, I appreciate all you do, and thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Chair and Board Members. My name is Max Timberlake, Jr., fourteen seventy-nine Dorset Road. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of Powhatan Farm Bureau of Directors. I apologize if my voice may be somewhat distorted because I just came out of a four-hour of dental surgery. The Powhatan Farm Bureau Board of Directors hereby supports the Commissioner of Revenue remain in charge of the county real estate assessment process. The current Commissioner has gone on record in support of annual assessments and adding in-house employees to conduct those fifteen thousand assessments. After the two thousand twenty assessments, there were only sixty-five case appeals to the Equalization Board, with only thirty-one of those appeals being changed from the original assessment. By that measure, the current Commissioner of Revenue seems to be doing an excellent record. In summary, to take the assessment function out of the current organization is in direct conflict with three elections and eleven hundred, two hundred, eleven thousand, two hundred and eleven voters who voted in two thousand and twenty. I thank you for your time and hope you consider my, my input.
My name is Keith Booth from twenty-two forty-six Branch Forest Way in Powhatan, New Jersey. Powhatan, I'm from New Jersey, but I'm been a resident of Virginia for the last three years, I'm sorry. I had sent the Board of Supervisors my email opinion on a suggestion of what could be done. Then, a person informed me that you can't have a referendum, we're not permitted to have a referendum, to decide on the merits of keeping the program within the Commissioner of Revenue's office for real estate assessments, or making it part of the administrators' responsibilities. You know, that being said, the young lady that spoke before came out with the next best thing that could be done, since I and many other people voted for Jamie Timberlake with the full understanding that he would have full responsibility for all assessments in Powhatan County, including real estate. And for the Board of Supervisors to change that, yes, there's a code that allows them to do that, but the, the rights of the voters and their desires need to be taken into consideration so that they don't feel that their vote in twenty nineteen was hijacked by the Board of Supervisors. And I'm all for having a public notice so that people that like the way it's being done now can express their opinions, and people that are more in favor of a change could also express their opinions. But, being from New Jersey, and I probably regret saying this, but the, what's being done to that gentleman back there is a political hit job. And, and I've been subject of a hit job myself years ago, and that's one of the main reasons I'm up here speaking tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Board. Sharon Yance, nineteen seventeen Fair Oaks Road. I disagree with the County Administrator's proposed changes in the reassessment process. The proposal would remove the reassessment process from the Constitutional Office of the Commissioner of Revenue and create a new department under the County Administrator. It seems an unnecessary expense for the county. The Constitution of Virginia establishes three checks and balances in the process of local taxation. The tax rate is set by the elected Board of Supervisors, you guys. The reassessment process is overseen by the elected Commissioner of Revenue. Taxes are then collected by the Treasurer. Each body plays a part in the collective taxation process to protect the people from corruption and being overtaxed by one part of the body. We, the people, decide who represents us in each separate part of the process by election. Under the proposed plan, the checks and balances system is destroyed because the assessment power and tax levy power fall under the same body. I, for one, am not willing to compromise the checks and balance system we have here in Powhatan, under the falsehood of operational efficiency. Mr. Timberlake has another proposal that should be considered before making such an important decision. He's worked in the office as Treasurer, as Commissioner of Revenue for twelve years, and has experience, training, and knowledge of the county. And I sent emails to each of you and referred to Mr. Timberlake in a number of them as Treasurer. I apologize for my mistake. I'm not knowledgeable about real estate assessment, but I voted for someone who is. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Kristy Elliott, thirty-four seventy-one Anderson Highway. Well, I've been quiet, believe it or not, but I'm done. I'm sure the decision has already been made. This is my problem I'm having these days. We come up here, we speak, we give our opinion, the vote goes on. So does anybody listen? But we keep trying. We keep trying to make change. Now, maybe I'm wrong, or maybe I'm stupid, but I believe the County Administrator reports to the Board of Supervisors. So where's the check and balances going to come in here with these assessments? Now, Jamie is elected. If we don't like what he does, we want to elect him. Personally, I voted for him. Do I go to my district Board of Supervisor for help? No, I don't vote for him, and I don't think he'll help me. So, who's going to help us out here? Do I go to my elected official, Jamie, or do y'all continue to just make your changes the way you want to, and don't even listen to the people?
Is anyone else wishing to speak?
Jamie Timberlake, fourteen fifty Schroeder Road. First, thank everybody for coming tonight, the people who have sent emails. If I can get a Yankee to come out and support me, I'm doing something. Appreciate you, Keith, but no, I'm trying to make light of it because I take it so personally. It's what I ran on in two thousand and three and lost by four hundred and, excuse me, five hundred and fifty-four votes. I ran on it again in two thousand and seven. The Commissioner of Revenue at the time was a great person, and, and did great things for the county, but she didn't want to deal with real estate because of the politi, political ramifications. The Constitution of Virginia puts it there. The code backs it up. It, it just, to me, it's our responsibility. Oh, and I am invoking my five-minute rule because I'm representing the eleven thousand, two hundred and eleven votes from the last election. I talked about the two thousand and three, I talked about the two thousand, we didn't talk about two thousand and four yet. I was approached, actually, in two thousand and three and asked to run. This wasn't actually something I had come up with myself. A group of people who had a problem with the way real estate was being handled approached me. None of you up there would know that because you didn't call me. Mr. Berry reached out to me, Mr. Byerly knows it because he reached out to me, Ms. Carmack this morning reached out to me, but the rest of you didn't even bother to talk to me about it. So, that in itself should show that there's a problem. In two thousand and four, Mr. Ware, Delegate Ware, the Honorable Delegate Ware, did Powhatan a favor. Prior to that, you didn't have an option. We all complained about mandates and all those kind of things, and in two thousand and four, it was recognized that there was an issue. He took it to legislation and it passed, and it gave you the option to do it outside the Constitutional Office. But we didn't do it. I wasn't in office in two thousand and four, so I can't answer for why. In two thousand and seven, I ran again, and I won, handedly a second time. The, one main thing that I think people listened to and elected me for was to handle real estate. And I think I've kept that campaign promise. I mean, each of you have run a campaign. Mr. Ware and I joke about, he, he talks about his campaigns, and the only thing I have over him is that I lost my very first one, and I learned lessons and came back again. But I have to give him props for giving us an option at the local level, and there may be a time in the future when we need to use that option. But number one, I don't think now is the time. To read exactly what thirty-two seventy-four, that's the enabling legislation that you've quoted in the resolution, it allows an exemption to the standard. The standard is that it's under the Constitutional Office. This, this was done to allow four specific localities to exercise and do it outside of that law, and allowed them to do a joint reassessment office. Generally, every piece of legislation has a fiscal impact study, or a fiscal revenue study. I'm interested to see if any of you have actually read that, because there is one with this piece of legislation. It's a little less than a page, goes through an entire layout of the different forms of government, county manager, executive form, etc. And it gets to the bottom, and it says benefits and cons. And I want to remind you, this is under the title of operational efficiency, is the way that this was proposed in the budget. The primary benefit would be being able to establish a joint Department of Real Estate with any contiguous county or city that could reduce the overhead of establishing and maintaining the Department of Assessment. Doesn't say a single thing about a county administrator. The con, and the only con listed, is that under the structure, real estate, under the current structure, real estate assessments are made by the Commissioner of Revenue. The Commissioner of Revenue is an elected officer accountable to the public, in parentheses, it says voters. The direct accountability would be lost if this were moved as an adminis, under an administrative division. Then there's one last comment below it that's spaced, and I'm not sure if it's listed as a con or not, but I consider it one. If you change, the current form of government is more in line with the rural character of localities. If that doesn't answer it, then I don't know what's, what does. I'm going to skip the rest of this because we've, three of us have had lots of conversations about it, and you know where I stand. But I would support Ms. Walters' deferral to give further time, or I would make the suggestion that you amend the resolution. The first whereas should actually say fifty-eight point one thirty-two seventy, not seventy-four. The third whereas should read, "Under the direction and control of the duly-elected Commissioner of Revenue." And the, "Now for there be resolved," the third line should read, "Duly-elected Commissioner of Revenue." I want to read one last thing, and I'm going to stop because I talked about it earlier today. But I said I take it personally. And the reason I take it personally is because that's what the state code and the Virginia Constitution says, and I'm going to quote. "The principal officer should be aware of their personal and legal liabilities. The courts have clearly ruled that the code confers the duties of the individual, not the office." That's in, and I might mispronounce it, Hussein versus Miller from two thousand and two U.S. District Court. Though the appointees of the Commissioner have the authority to perform the duties, on behalf of the principal officer, the Commissioner is personally responsible and liable for all activities that occur within the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Last opportunity, we got to look on Zoom.
Madam Chair, I did not see anybody.
Okay, thank you. That being said, I will close the public comment hearing. Public comment period, moving on to new business. Mr. Smithers?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This resolution, the first resolution on your agenda tonight, Resolution R. twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-one, is that authorizes establishment of our real estate assessment department. The fiscal year twenty-two budget included some structural improvements, including three items, two of which we all agree upon. Those two items are the conversion of the tax year from a fiscal year basis to a calendar year basis, and the second change was going to an annual assessment. Again, these are two items we all agreed upon. The third item involved is the creation of the assessor's office, which would be responsible with, for determining fair market value of properties on an annual basis. Many of Virginia's best-managed localities have, had the assessor's office as a distinct agency. In fact, a recent survey completed by sixty Virginia localities, twenty of those localities confirmed that they had the annual assessments somewhere other than the Commissioner's office. Of the twenty localities that did have annual assessments, only one of the twenty were still under the Commissioner of Revenue's office. Of the furth, and I think of a further interest, in, in the same twenty, seventy percent of those twenty localities had a triple-A bond rating, which just gives you an indication that they were well-managed in, in our localities. As requested, the Commissioner of Revenue handled those duties admirably in the past, without the benefits of the annual assessment, excuse me, without the benefits of the in-house assessment. But the best practices strategy is a separate assessment department. I know there have been a few questions that have been circulated about our ability to create this agency. I thought it may be helpful to have Mr. Lansing here at County Attorney's Office to help you with some questions on that ability. Mr. Lansing?
Thank you, Mr. Smithers. Madam Chair, I've been asked to address a few misunderstandings and questions regarding how the real estate, real estate assessment process functions under the Constitution of Virginia, under the Code of Virginia, and under the current rules that we have placed here in Powhatan County. I, I don't know how these misunderstandings can sometimes generate, but the understanding of, of many has been that the ability of the Commissioner of Revenue to conduct real estate assessments is part of the constitutional system of checks and balances, that the real estate assessment authority is inherent in the office of the Commissioner of Revenue, that there is personal liability for the Commissioner of Revenue in his, in his ability to perform that assessment. And finally, that, that the resolution on the table removed the system of checks and balances with respect to the real estate process. So I want to address how the, first of all, the Constitution of Virginia addresses the office of the Commissioner of Revenue. I have a copy of the Constitution of Virginia right here, and it, it says in only one sentence, the, the sole, the sole reference to the phrase Commissioner of Revenue in the entire Constitution of Virginia. It says, "There shall be elected by the qualified voters of each county and city and treasurer, a treasurer, a sheriff, an attorney for the Commonwealth, a clerk, who shall be clerk of court for, in the office of which deeds are recorded, and a Commissioner of Revenue. The duties and compensation of such officers shall be prescribed by general or special act." So in other words, under the Constitution of Virginia, there is a Commissioner of Revenue, and the Commissioner of Revenue is elected by the voters. It doesn't say that the Commissioner of Revenue is personally responsible for the real estate assessment, and it certainly doesn't say that that is inherent in his office. The Code of Virginia goes on to say that he may perform such other duties not inconsistent with his office, as the governing body, that's this board, may request. So there are a number of responsibilities the Commissioner of Revenue can exercise when he is asked by the Board of Supervisors to do so. So, next question is, how is it that the real estate assessment is conducted under state law? Well, under the Code of Virginia, that power over the real estate assessment process is vested very clearly within the Board of Supervisors. And state law gives the Board of Supervisors a number of different options for how the real estate assessment process can be conducted. One of those options is that it can have a professional assessor come in and do that. That is actually what the, the County of Powhatan has done for quite some time. It has hired the firm of Womblar Eames to conduct that assessment. Womblar Eames Appraisal Group LTD. And Chase, if you would, if you would place the MOU in front of you on the screen, that would be helpful. Another option, and not the default option, but one of many, is that the Board of Supervisors can vest the responsibility for the real estate assessment in the Commissioner of Revenue. And the code section that allows the Board of Supervisors to do so, if the board chooses, says that this option is in lieu of the method now prescribed by law. So, in other words, if the Commissioner of Revenue does conduct the real estate assessment, that is not by any means the default option under state law. It's just one of the many options that is available to the Commissioner of Revenue. So as, as we scroll down and we look into this memorandum of understanding, you'll see paragraph three, that the parties agree that Womblar Eames Appraisal Group would be the entity, that's the, that's the professional assessor that conducts the assessment in Powhatan County, and has for many years. That doesn't mean that the Board of Supervisors is bound to personally do so forever. And actually, the Board of Supervisors hired that firm back in two thousand and fourteen. It granted the county administrator the authority to reach out and hire that firm. And that firm has received its, its salary, it's received its payment from the Board of Supervisors directly for all of these years. Under paragraph one of that memorandum of understanding, the Powhatan Board of Supervisors, way back in two thousand and sixteen, gave the Commissioner of Revenue the ability to, to have oversight and supervision over Womblar Eames. So, for example, toward the end, it says that, let's see, that the board has appointed the Commissioner to serve as the full-time person responsible, and also says that he will have direction and control, that's back in paragraph three, of the Commissioner with respect to the biennial reassessment to be conducted in Powhatan. And finally, in paragraph five, it mentions that this is not a permanent arrangement, that this is something that has to be revisited every year, as it has been, at least orally or by implication. It has been accepted that the Commissioner of Revenue would, would periodically be re-granted that authority from the Board of Supervisors under the state constitution, I'm sorry, under the state code to conduct that reassessment. So I, I won't get into all of the many options that the Board of Supervisors has in terms of who it delegates that responsibility to conduct the reassessment, but, but the gist of it is just that the Board of Supervisors has many options, vesting the Commissioner of Revenue with that responsibility is merely one of them. So as for checks and balances, obviously, checks and balances, especially when it comes to money, are important to all of us. And, and the Code of Virginia does provide for checks and balances with regard to the real estate assessment process. And that is laid out, not in the form of any elected official, but in the Board of Equalization. The Board of Equalization is the quasi-judicial body that is appointed by the Circuit Court of Powhatan County, so that if, if any individual in Powhatan County who owns land is not pleased with how the assessment is conducted, then that person can appeal the assessment to the, to the Board of Equalization, and on the basis of objective criteria measured by this neutral body that's appointed by the Circuit Court, that can be challenged. That has been the case, always. It is the case in every city and county of Virginia, whether the Board of Supervisors delegates responsibility to the Commissioner of Revenue or to anyone else. There's always a Board of Equalization, and that is not on the table for change in the resolution that is in front of the board today.
Thank you, sir. We'll now have some discussion on this proposed resolution. Would anyone care to have some dialogue?
I would. Why are we going through this talking pony show? You guys already figured out what you're going to do.
Excuse me, sir, we've, we've, we've closed the public comment period.
That's where all of this nonsense comes from, right here.
Sir, sir, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave. The public comment period's over. You can wait. We have another public comment period.
Karen, I gotta tell you something.
Sir?
I will make it my business to make sure everybody in Powhatan knows what exactly you are and who you work for.
Okay. Moving on, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Eric, so just to get it clear, when we look at the Constitution of Virginia, there is no language that mentions checks and balances as far as the assessment process is concerned?
That's correct. There's no reference with regard to the assessment of any checks and balances, other than at least the Board of Equalization, but that's in the Code of Virginia.
And so, as a result, the Code of Virginia then drives and sets the standard for how we will handle the assessment process?
Exactly.
And the Code of Virginia is clear in your mind that that authority rests with the governing body, which would be the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, Mr. Cox. The Code of Virginia vests the Board of Supervisors with the authority to just choose any of the many options that the board has in terms of who it wants to conduct the assessment.
Thank you. Mr. Smith. You talked about survey and counties. If I understood you correctly, for counties doing annual assessments, the norm is for the appraisal process to be vested outside of the Commissioner Revenue's office. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I would define the norm as the respondents to the survey. There were 60 respondents, 20 of which did annual assessments. Of that 20, 19 of that 20 used the, or did not use the Commissioner's office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, let me, if I may, just follow up on Mr. Cox's comments. So, Eric, to recap, you know, what you said earlier, there isn't anything in the Constitution or Code of Virginia that addresses what has been put out multiple times now, but there is a separation of powers, and that we're somehow usurping that by having in-house assessments. Is that correct?
That's correct, exactly, Mr. Williams.
And it's also true, going back to what Mr. Cox has already brought out, that the authority rests solely in the Board of Supervisors' realm of governing for the assessments in the county.
That's correct, in terms of who it delegates the responsibility to. Yes.
Okay, now going back to the Commissioner of Revenue. We've had comments that said, "This is a responsibility that's inherent, that's invested under the Commissioner of Revenue. Does the Code of Virginia or the Constitution address that, or state that, or give that power?"
Give the power to the Commissioner of Revenue to conduct the assessment, only if the Board of Supervisors so chooses.
The other question is, we receive no monies for the Commissioner of Revenue from the comp board for assessments, really? I can answer the question. We don't. Is that correct, Mr. Smith?
That's correct.
And the reason being is because it's not recognized as a function underneath the Code of Virginia. So that responsibility doesn't recognize by the comp board as being underneath the Commissioner of Revenue. That's a statement. Is that true, Mr. Smith?
That's true.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to make a statement, speech, talk?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think the first thing that I would like to say is, thank you to the Commissioner of Revenue for what you've done in this county for a long period of time. Thank you for the citizens that have contacted us, pro and con, of where this goes. It's, from my perspective, and I did, I sat down with Jamie today for a long time. And I'll tell you exactly what I told him. I'm looking for accuracy and fairness. We all work for you. The accuracy and the fairness is what I'm searching for. I don't think we, I don't think we have a bad situation, but I'm always looking for a way to improve our situation. When I look at where this Board of Supervisors wants to go, and it's an interesting thing, because I feel like Mr. Smithers is taking some unnecessary, unneeded heat. Mr. Smithers gives us proposals. He makes suggestions to us, the board. And we're elected by you, the people of this county, in districts. If you don't like the decisions we make, you can do the same thing with us. You can do with Mr. Timberlake. Don't reelect us. It's a simple deal. It's not complicated. But Mr. Smithers has just presented us with some options, and options of how we can improve Powhatan County, make it a, I mean, I think we would all like to have that highest credit rating we can get, which is a AAA, and we're at a double A. And when you look through what we're doing, we're not trying to control things. We're trying to have the best practices we can have as a county. We're trying to come forth with ways to improve our county. Not departments, not constitutional officers, our county. We're all Powhatanians, as far as I'm concerned. I just, I want you to understand that Mr. Smithers is not the one that's voting on this. We're the ones voting. He put a proposal out in front of us, just like Mr. Timberlake put a proposal out in front of us. And we have that decision to make of how we want to go forward. We all agree with in-house assessment. We all agree that we should go down this path together. The question is, is are we gonna have it in a separate department, or are we gonna have it under the Commissioner of Revenue? And that's the only question here. When we finish this, we've made a decision. And it's like I told Mr. Timberlake this afternoon, once we make the decision, we've got to move forward as a county. We got to continue on, and we're gonna be a team to work together to make this county better. That's all I have to say, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Barley, thank you for your comments. Because I think you must have been reading my mind, because that's exactly where I'm at. I feel like, you know, you took the temperature of the board very well in your comments. The goal here is to do things better. We're public servants. Anytime we feel like we have an opportunity where we can move the system, wherever we're at on the continuum, and be able to make it a little bit better, we're anxious to take that opportunity to improve the customer service to you, the people we serve. And that's what this is about. Now, taking some of the blame off of Mr. Smithers, I reminded him when we first met, one of my goals was to do in-house assessments. And based on conversations that I'd had with supervisors in Goochlin, Hanover, Enrico County, all three AAA bonded counties. And I came to understand the benefits of having a trained professional staff in-house, and how that served those counties extremely well. So I was very much interested, as was he, in bringing this forward. So again, thank you, Mr. Barley, for your comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Kind of continuing in the same theme, talking about Mr. Smith, our county administrator. Less than a year ago, we hired Mr. Smith as our county administrator. Mr. Smith was head of finance department in Enrico County. That means as head of finance for Enrico County, arguably one of the best managed counties in the country, not the Commonwealth, but the country. He was a consummate financial professional in the Commonwealth. You do not hire expertise of this quality to stay frozen in time, and you bring with it the expectation that there will be change. So what efforts has Mr. Smith led in his first eight months? One, he created a 10-year budget planning process that allowed us to reduce the tax rate to 79 cents, a reduction of nine cents. A CIP process that has shifted from finance as you go to pay as you go. We will still have to finance some projects, but significantly fewer, which means lower debt and significantly less interest payments. Two, he's created a permit center. The county has a multitude of permit requirements, the paperwork. Today, it takes too long to get your building permit, your land disturbance permit. The list just goes on. The budget which we are about to advertise tackles that problem head-on with the solution provided by Mr. Smith. Three, annualize the real estate tax. Today, real estate taxes are advertised and collected on a fiscal year basis, and we've begun the process to move to a calendar year basis. This change will provide significant efficiencies for the Treasurer's Office and the Commissioner Revenue's Office. And four, and now the appraisal process, in-house, annual basis, housed under Mr. Smith. I voted to hire Mr. Smith to plum his expertise, not to ignore it. My expectations when we hired him was that he would take the county operations to a higher level. This change is about best practices, enhanced efficiencies, and trust in Mr. Smith's judgment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. To follow up a little bit, I had called some other localities similar to us, and spoke to their Commissioner of the Revenue, where they basically had a separation. And speaking of checks and balances, one concern that I had is, I think this offers a layer of protection to the citizens of the county. You do not have your direct elected official with the hiring and firing capability over your assessor. If you have a complaint, it's very similar to exactly what you have now, except you're gonna be complaining to your head assessor. And if you're not happy with that, you're gonna be going to the Board of Equalization. So in my opinion, I think it actually offers a further layer of protection. So, that's all. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna move for approval of Resolution R 2021 dash 21.
Okay. Any questions? Do I have a second, or any questions or comments on the motion? This is a resolution.
Second. You need a second on the motion.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? And then we need a roll call.
Sure. Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Barley.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to the second resolution of the evening.
Yeah, and if you want to be in Henrico, then go live in Henrico.
All right. I think Mr. Shardine is up.
Good evening, board members. So this resolution, the background on it, beginning of last week, we were contacted by Senator Spamberger's office about a potential funding program being proposed in the House Committee on Infrastructure and Transportation. They're expecting, if this passes, to bring around $20 million in transportation funding to our district. And if it's allocated on a per capita basis, we don't know it will be, but assuming they distribute it that roughly, we estimate Powhatan's share would be about $800,000. Could be more, could be less. We can request up to 100% funding of transportation projects. Historically, they've usually funded more, around 80%, and then the remainder is funded from either local, state, or regional sources. So we were given a very short timeline on this, and the Senator's office apologized for that, and they protested to the House that this was too short of a timeline. Nonetheless, it's what we were given. So we had to submit a couple of projects to them the end of last week. We did that. And then passing a resolution supporting those will help them score better, essentially, under House consideration. So given the scoring criteria that was required of it, we pulled out a couple of our smart scale projects that we had developed in this last round that weren't successful. One of those is Stave Mill and Route 60, the addition of the left turn lane there on 60 on the Stave Mill to address some of the congestion and backups that we see on 60. And that one's one we've been looking at for some time. I think it first appeared in the Route 60 Timmin's study that was done several years ago. And we've continued to develop that further with VDOT since. And in the several public comment opportunities we've had in open houses, we've had the response to that project has been overwhelmingly positive. I think people see the need. So we're proposing that as one of them. Then the other is the Red Lane Road and Route 60, Continuous Green Tea. Again, that one came from the more recent Route 60 corridor preservation study that was a long effort with VDOT. Again, that one also went through public review and comment, and we chose to apply last smart scale round, who unfortunately wasn't awarded. We think it might have a better chance here. So we're proposing that one. And then lastly, we thought we should include a lower-cost project, since that'll increase our odds. So we looked at the Holly Hills Road right turn lane in. So that's one we've developed with VDOT. We have conceptual plans for it. We have detailed cost estimates. And again, that's one we've heard many times from the public that there's a need for that. In fact, the only public comment I received on this resolution tonight was someone in favor of that specific project. So we think these are three good potential projects that we could move along, hopefully, one of them through this. So we applied on your behalf, and again, just requesting approval of this resolution, which will help it score better.
Thank you, Brett. Any discussion on this proposed resolution?
Madam Chair, I'll move to, for approval of Resolution R dash 2021 dash 22.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? We need another roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Barley.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye.
All right, moving on, the update on the courthouse parking lot expansion.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Madam Chair, I'd like to have Ms. Carter here with us tonight to help us update you on that project.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak on this project. This was a project that was part of the bond issuance in 2018. And we, of course, we designed, and there's an error in the paperwork that you have on page 31 in your packet. I said that all three of the, it is a three-phase project. And I said that all three phases were complete in design. There is one section that is not complete, and that is the sheriff's parking lot, which is the bigger portion of it. It's like 90% designed, but there was a couple things that we were waiting on. And then COVID came, and we shut down the project because we didn't know where the county was gonna be financially. So the other two parts of the project, the temporary parking lot by the sheriff's office behind the courthouse, that is designed and has gone to the review process. And then there's some drainage in front of the dentist office along Route 13 that is also designed and has gone to VDOT for approval. So we have spent 62,000, approximately 62,000, on surveying and engineering design for those three, all three of those phases. We just had the remaining sheriff's lot to design, or to finish the design. And so this was a, so that kind of covered the first two points on page 31. And then I wanted to cover a little bit about how the project, because there was some question about the estimates. I already thought that the estimates were really high for this project. And so I just wanted to go through where those estimates came from. So it was based on a couple of things. The square footage, square footage of the asphalt, the thickness of the asphalt. Because we have a fire lane in this project, the thickness is more for the fire lane. We also have curb and gutter in this project, and that helps with the drainage. We have lighting and electrical in it to get the dark sky compliance and to match. We have lighting and electrical in it to get the dark sky compliance and to match with the courthouse lighting. We have signage and striping, and then the surveying and design, and there, there was a, an infrastructure utility sanitary sewer. So the Commonwealth attorney, this parking lot abuts to their property, and they are on septic system. And so this project, we would have to take out the septic system and put them onto the county force main that is in Marion Harland Drive. And so part of that project and the public partnership came with Michael Potter. So his property also has a septic tank, so he was going to do all of the infrastructure to put in, to take out both of those septic systems and put them onto the force main. And he was also going to do, he agreed to help, well, he will provide an easement for the fire lane, and he also agreed to help with some retaining wall on the front of the property along Route 13 that's required for the drainage. And his, currently, he has 26 paved parking spots, and this will give him a net increase of six spots. So he's not, it's not a huge amount of benefit for him, but it does give us the benefit of having a secondary access, so it's a, and the fire lane. So we have a one entrance off of Marion Harland and the other one onto Route 13. So it's a big benefit to have the cooperation and the public-private partnership between the two, between us and Michael Potter.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Carter, what is the genesis of this project? Why did it ever get started?
And I know it's hard to see now because of COVID, because we don't have a lack of parking places now, but prior to COVID, anytime there was court in session, and if it was a civil district court and circuit court at the same time, there was never any parking places around there, and the sheriff's deputies would park there as well to be part of the court. And so a lot of the people that were coming for court would end up parking across the street and take up the Four Seasons or the county seats parking places, and we had a lot of complaints that, that there wasn't enough parking around the courthouse. And it really is, if you've ever tried to park there on court day, it's very difficult.
Okay, I'm not clear. How does this increase the number of parking places?
It's around, it actually increases 82 parking places where the sheriff's vehicles park. So it's right across the street from the courthouse is this parking.
So I'm.
I think he's going, it's gravel right now, correct?
Yes.
So how paving it, will that increase the parking? Am I?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, because I'm wondering the same thing, yeah.
Oh, because the gravel parking lot is only half of this parking, the total parking lot, it's less than half of the total parking lot.
So why aren't we using the total parking?
I don't understand your question. So right now, we're using the, all of the gravel parking lot for a lot of the sheriffs, we are using that, the sheriff's deputies park there, and that fills up as well, in addition to around the courthouse.
Mr. Williams is going to help. Madam Chair, ma'am.
Yes.
I think what the question is that they're trying to get to is, you have space there now where people are parking. Are you proposing expanding that existing space?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And that expansion will constitute how many additional parking places?
Taking away the ones that are in the gravel parking place?
No, right now, you have gravel, and you have parking spaces for X number of vehicles. Now, what you're proposing is, with this project, is increasing the number of parking spaces with the expansion with the gravel going out.
Right, about 75 more.
So you're saying with the expansion, you will have 75 more?
In current, yes.
And the 75 more is in addition to how many can park there now with gravel?
Correct.
How many can park there now on the gravel? That's the question.
Yeah, approximately 35.
Okay.
If they're, if they park correctly, but there's no.
If they park correctly, so you can, you know, shoehorn in 35.
Now.
Now. But what you're saying is, with the expansion, with moving outward from the existing parking spaces, from the 35, you can add an additional 75, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Cox, does that answer your question?
Almost.
Yum yum.
Madam Chair.
I think I know where you're going next.
So why do we need to pave the gravel to expand?
We don't, we could leave it gravel.
Okay.
But then, but again, we're going to run into the same problem with, yeah, we can fit 35 places in there, but people don't park in there because it's not striped.
So paving the gravel is totally separate from the expansion?
Well, I think it's all cumulative.
It's all together.
That's what I'm trying to.
So you're asking, why would we not leave that part gravel and pave the rest of it?
Why would you pave anything? Why can't you just expand it?
He's saying just have a big gravel parking lot as opposed to paving it, and you're, I know what your answer is going to be, you're not going to get 75 more spots because they're going to all park all haphazardly?
And you won't have a fire lane.
So the budget for this, if my memory served me right, was $400,000?
$430,000.
Okay, and so.
And 62, that is used up with surveying and engineering.
If this was a good idea, and we had the bond money in 2018, why hasn't it been done?
Because of COVID, we put the project on hold.
I'm sorry.
We put the project on hold because of COVID.
Thank you. But we've still continued to spend engineering money, is that correct, or was that done ahead of time? I'm just trying to get the sequence.
That was all done ahead of time before we shut the project down.
So we did the engineering, then we put it on hold, and now we're trying to figure out what to do. I'm catching up.
Madam Chair, if I may, ask a few follow-up questions. Ramona, you had said earlier about the two existing septic tanks that would be hooked up to the force main, and that Mr. Potter was willing to do that?
Yes.
And you had mentioned that this was part of a public-private partnership that he had proposed. In exchange, we would get, he would get six additional parking places, we would have the two parking lots that would be connected, and we would get a fire lane.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. And then we would, the two.
And then he was going to do the retention wall in that area down by him.
Right. And he would be connected, so we would also get sewer fees from him.
I understand. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions?
Madam Chair. 35 parking spaces are there now in the gravel area.
That's approximate. And how I base that is, that section in the new design had 30, about 35 parking faces, if it's all striped.
And there's grass between Mr. Potter's paved parking lot and the gravel lot that we have now, which has a gazebo parked in it, or it did at one time, if my memory's right.
Correct.
That's going to all go away, and you're going to continue this parking lot over to Mr. Potter's.
Correct.
Mr. Potter is going to do Palatine County a big favor, dig a hole, get rid of the sewer septic tank that's there, and get rid of his septic tank too, and hook up to the county sewer, right?
Yes.
The drainage that you're referring to in front of the dentist office, or the old Yates building, where there's gravel, not asphalt, was that part of this project in the beginning, or was that part of the deal?
No, that was part of the project in the beginning.
Okay. And in the project in the beginning, when you went to Balzer, who seems to be the engineer on this, right?
Yes.
And we paid them $62,000, right?
Correct.
You have a nice picture. Let me ask you this. Did they give us an estimate as to how much this cost would be at that particular time?
The cost of the engineering or the entire project?
Project.
They did not give us an estimate.
Why?
Because they hadn't, so we actually went out for proposals for this, for engineering firms, and Balzer was the low, the low price, because it was less than $80,000 by procurement. We don't have to go out for a request for proposals, we can go out for requests for bids or quotes. And so we sent it out, and we had two, three proposals, and Balzer was the lowest. So their task order was to design the project, and then when you get a design complete, then you will ask for a construction estimate. But they can't give you an estimate until they, until they have designed it, so they know what parts and pieces are going to go into it.
Did they design this?
It, this, they designed this except for the sheriff's is not complete. That's, I said, that, that portion of it isn't complete. We still have to locate the exact, we have to get the exact location of the septic tanks.
Did they not know there were septic tanks there when they designed this?
They haven't finished designing it yet. They knew there was septic tanks in there, yes, but they haven't finished the design yet. That was the part that, that they have left to complete.
Okay, so we, we go down this path, and we get this design partially not completed yet, right?
Mm-hmm.
Make sure I understand the steps of this process. We borrowed $430,000, but we don't have the design complete with an estimate from the engineers, the professionals?
When we do a CIP project, we base it on similar-sized projects that have happened at the time. Of course, that was three years ago. And we, we take the overall size of the lot and compare it to similar projects that have already been complete. So for instance, we, we get a price for lineal feet of curbing and gutter and for square feet of asphalt, so that's, and our, we try to get as close as we can on the CIP projects, but most times they're over-budgeted because we certainly don't want to be over-budget when we get the bids in.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying there. Can you tell me what the square foot of asphalt is?
I can't, off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Can you tell me the thickness of the asphalt they're going to put down?
It depends, the fire lane would be probably four and a half to five inches, and then all of the rest of it would be three and a half inches of asphalt. And then there's also the gravel underneath, so probably five inches, depending on the.
How much is the sewer replacement? What's the estimated cost for that if we didn't ask Mr. Potter to help us, or if Mr. Potter didn't volunteer to help us? How much would that cost us?
We didn't include that in the project, but I can get that because we do have similar utility projects. But we didn't do that because that was going to be his in-kind work. We weren't going to be paying for that out of our $430,000.
And he's going to build the knee wall from that corner, how far down, to where the entrance is? Or is he going to build the knee wall all the way down to the corner of whatever it is across from Ross?
No, just to where his driveway, where the driveway entrance is. So really, just in front of, like across the street from the Four Seasons, really there, from, from the corner to where the entrance is.
Part of our negotiation with him was, he's allowing us, Mr. Potter's allowing Palatine County to use this entrance into his parking lot off of Route 13. Am I right?
Correct.
If we didn't use his entrance, now we're going to go down and use an entrance that we would have to waive our access management standards to in order to put an entrance at the other end of that parking lot, right?
Yeah, there would not be enough room in there to do that.
To do what?
To put another entrance in there, in between the Marion Harland and his entrance.
Is that because it won't meet our access management standards?
That, and there's also hydrant in the corner there, so that there's infrastructure as well that would keep that. But the big issue is, is our access standards.
Did we explore going out the back lot? But there's a lot that's behind the Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
That is owned by Michael Potter as well.
Yeah, this one's.
County of Palatine.
Where the Commonwealth Attorney's Office is.
Yes.
Yeah. So there isn't.
So the county owns it.
Yeah, that we're the, is that the lot that you're talking about, where the Commonwealth Attorney's Office?
It's a lot right behind the Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
So you're talking 26B 2-3-18?
3-18, I can see that much of it. I might need to go to the eye doctor. Yeah, that's the lot. We, that's, we've not considered going out right there, putting asphalt there, because, you know, in 10 years, we're going to need more asphalt. And for 400,000, I mean, let's do it one time, not two times, would be my idea.
And, and that does slow down quite a bit back there.
Sure does.
It slows down to the, yeah, so there would.
Which would feed nice into the pond down there at the other side.
But we would.
Mr. Yates' pond.
We would be required to, to do a lot of fill.
For $400,000, that's a lot of money for a parking lot. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. One thing to point out, we've borrowed and have been paying on this since 2018. I think a year ago, even regardless of COVID, I made the point that we borrow the money and we're paying on it. COVID, you know, shame on us, shame on whoever, but COVID should have nothing to do with the, this project going forward or not going forward. So I think tonight, what we should do, do we want to in fact go forward with this project? If we do, let's move. If not, let's pull the money off it and discuss, you know, where else we could best use the monies. That's, I mean, we, since 2018, and it's 2021, it's time to do something. Either move or get it off and figure out another project. I think that's what we should, the directive should be tonight.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mike. My question would be, at that point, is this a bond that we can do something else with, or is this bond tied directly to this project?
Excellent question.
I believe it can be moved to other projects, according to Charlotte, it can be.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have two questions. One from Ms. Carter. So if we do nothing, what's the downside?
We lose the engineering money, 62,000.
Okay.
Okay. And don't spend how much?
The remainder.
370, 70,000.
I think that's the point, we don't really know.
Okay. Mr. County Administrator, we've been talking about you as a sage this evening. Way in. How do you see this project?
This is called cannonball catching time.
Before my time, before my time, the county was wise enough to borrow the money with a broader scope of use, so, so we aren't limited to this project facility. My experience with surface parking versus deck parking is that $4,000 a space is kind of a typical price for surface parking, you know, so that does fit nicely with the $400,000 number. So then it just becomes a question, is this our priority of using, because we have total freedom as to where we spend the money, other than the $60,000. So are we better, better off spending the 370 elsewhere? We have some projects in our, Ramona's CIP that aren't funded right now, but they're funded with pay-as-you-go. Do we use that money for some of these parks and rec projects, or do we use it here? It's a priority issue, but, but the price itself, Mr. Barley, it doesn't scare me as much, as far as what I've heard in Enrico, as surface, cost of surface parking. I'm not sure about the depth question with the fire lane, and it would, does that increase the number? But the 400,000 number didn't scare me as far as cost. I think it's a reasonable number of 400 spaces.
Ms. Carter, what is, have you gotten complaints from the sheriff's office, the Commonwealth attorney, clerk of the court? I mean, can you weigh in on this a little bit as to kind of what, you know, you've been here longer than Mr. Smith, or what is your perspective on this project?
We certainly did get a lot more complaints before we put in that temporary parking on the back of the courthouse, and that is gravel right now. So we could always leave that gravel, it doesn't have to be paved. But that, I think, alleviated a lot of the circuit court issues and their complaints. The sheriff's department has always been an issue with their deputies parking, because they've always had to park across the street in the, in the gravel. And then we did get complaints from the businesses around there on court days that they were.
It's hard.
Yeah, they were, people were taking up their parking places that were supposed to be reserved for their clients.
Okay. Thank you. Do you all have druthers one way or the other?
I have another question.
Okay.
Is it possible that the $370,000 number can be lower?
It may come in lower, but the way construction projects are bidding out now, I would say.
They're all higher than they were three years ago when you. They're all higher than they were three years ago when you come up with this number. Much higher.
Mr. Cox, do you have another question?
Madam Chair, I'm just. This project has worried me from the start. That seems to me that there are much more pressing problems we have in Palatine than in terms of other projects. I, I can't list them. I don't have them. I'm just, I'm just not a fan of this. As far as the gravel parking lot across from this, I asked the circuit court judge myself. Was that a priority of his to have it paid since that's where he parks? And he said, no. It was not a priority of his. Okay, so that was one of the things I wanted to know before we go tripping down the lane was what did the circuit court judge feel like? Okay. He was, if it stayed gravel, and this is been a few months ago, that did not bother him.
Okay.
Okay, so it did not look like he wanted to weigh in to the project with an opinion.
Ms. Carter, with, back to the bond real quick. Does it have to stay in the utility department or could it go anywhere?
I believe it can go anywhere.
You believe it can go anywhere? Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. One option we have is.
Madam Chair, may I ask another question?
Yes.
Ramona, you referenced the drainage situation down in front of the dentist's office. Describe that for us. What, what does that look like?
So what was happening before is the, there were some low spots in between Marion Harland and Yates Lane. And it, the drainage was, was coming down Route thirteen and it was, it would hit the low spot and it would go between the houses and flood the houses. So there's two houses in there that have, and I'm not sure which, which ones, but they have sump pumps because the water is going in underneath there. And Michael Potter did do some work in front of there with gravel to try to grade it to take care of an issue that was the result of Aqua Virginia putting in the water line. When they put in that water line, they, they didn't, they didn't put the right material back in there and they didn't grade it properly. And so Michael Potter corrected that and compacted it and it's, it's somewhat better now, but we still need to get the water from where the parking, proposed parking lot is down to Yates Lane.
So is it still a problem? The flooding with the houses and?
Yes, when, when we have a lot of, like in, in the fall, when we had a lot of rain and then it got really cold, the water pools there and then it turns to ice and, and it's an issue for parking.
Madam Chair? Have my follow-up question, please. So what is the proposed solution? And the part of the project that addresses this on, you know, the drainage, what is the proposed solution to fix it?
It, it is to take from where the pavement edge is on Route thirteen to put a swell in there. And up, and then put that asphalt up to the edge of the sidewalk so that the water will flow down to the culvert under Yates Lane.
To the culvert where?
Yeah, under, under Yates Lane.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Madam Chair, Mrs. Carter. The gravel is an impervious surface. And we're now going to put in, excuse me, a permeable surface. We're now going, surface. Now we're going to put in something where it increases both the amount of runoff and the velocity. Why will that be better?
Actually gravel is considered impervious.
Not in my yard.
It is according to, according to stormwater standards.
Water, water goes through it.
But according to stormwater standards, it is, it's classified as impervious. So when we do stormwater calculations, it doesn't, it doesn't change.
So when we do our water calculations, if I have slick asphalt and I have gravel, do you calculate the runoff the same?
Yes, yeah, they do.
Wow, I didn't know that.
You can't sell that. I don't know who's selling it, but you can't sell that.
That's how they calculated.
I know, I didn't say, I didn't say, but I just. Mr. Byerley, I yield to you, sir.
Thank you. I'm not buying it either. Who owns that property? In front of those.
It's V dot. It's V dots.
Right away. Thank you.
So we have two options. We proceed tonight with the parking lot or we have Ms. Carter, Mr. Smith, or come back with us with some options of other, other ideas for the remaining three hundred and seventy thousand dollars and let them kind of hash it out. But I would like to do this within a month.
I'll support the latter, Madam Chair.
Okay, how about you all? A couple other projects. Do you find with that? Okay, all right. So if you could bring that perhaps in a workshop, I'll get with you a workshop in May so we can move along with that. All right. All righty, next up, item D. Zoning standards for solar energy farms.
So within the zoning ordinance, solar energy farms are listed as a conditional use within three zoning districts. Since twenty fifteen, the county has received and reviewed seven conditional use permit applications for solar energy farms with five of those being approved. Some of the, some members of the board of supervisors have indicated interest in adopting or pursuing use standards for solar energy farms. Right now, the policy guidance for that particular use is in the comprehensive plan. And then the planning commission in twenty nineteen adopted some guidance regarding the format and structure of application. So we have guidance in the comprehensive plan and adopted policy guidance by the planning commission. We don't have any specific standards within the zoning ordinance itself. So again, some board members have been interested in pursuing the potential of adopting use standards for that particular use. And the planning commission as well has expressed interest in looking into that as well. Within the packet, there is some information that staff has compiled looking at ten localities throughout the Commonwealth that summarizes how they address solar energy farms, either in their comprehensive plan or their zoning ordinance. So I think this is something that Mr. Cox introduced and his information is in the packet as well.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll have some discussion on this.
Madam Chair, since.
You were the one who precipitated this conversation. Why don't you go first?
If you turn to page fifty-two. There's a fair amount of information, this, that, and the other for other jurisdictions. I believe we have all of the information we need with our own experience. I've been involved with every solar farm project since it started. Still a few Mrs. Carmack and so is Mr. Williams. What you will see as I laid out, first of all, is to get out of the comprehensive plan and get into our ordinances, which are non-negotiable. That's what you have to do. And you would do that by putting solar farms in our use standards. It would become a category. That's, that's where it would fit. If you remember from the original information that I gave you, I took all of this and the other, the next one that we'll look at, and I ran it by Mr. Lackney. And he said, in principle, this was fine. So what, what we're looking at, it has to go to the planning commission. Okay, but it'll work. You can do it. Okay, there's nothing wrong with, with legally with what I suggested. Now, on page fifty-two, there are only one, two, three, four new things. One is size. Said the total project, this is, this is my language, no one else's. The total project, including buffers, setbacks, fencing, the entire thing shall not exceed three hundred and fifty acres. We only have one of our five that are approved that exceed three hundred and fifty acres. And until the last Cypress Creek rezoning, there never was a discussion over what the total was. It was accepted as being the entire project, not some subset of it. But this would clarify that. Okay, this is to make sure everybody understands three hundred and fifty acres. Okay, no more. Visibility. When we first started talking about this, we, way back when, was right after Scott one and two had been done. What made Scott one and two successful? Given the number of complaints we've had, which were other, other than the people around it during construction, none, which you couldn't see it. And it was small. They were both under three hundred and fifty acres. And so that, that works. With the exception of Cypress Creek, you can't see any of the others. They're invisible. So small and no visibility seems to work. It seems to work for me if we're going to have a rural county, having a, a utility grade electrical manufacturing and storage facility sitting on the edge of our rural road does not promote rural in my eyes. The third thing is location. No new solar farms would be approved if they're within two miles. You can choose two miles or something I picked out of the air. That really doesn't matter to me. What would, what I was trying to do was to make it clear to a Cypress Creek that you cannot string together multiple projects and try and call them different. Okay, which, which is, so whether it's two miles or one mile, we need separation to make this work for us. The decommission bond is something that we have. We don't have any language that requires that, but that is what we have done in the past. No salvage. Looking out for salvage for thirty-five years just makes no sense at all. Everything else that's on here comes out of the comprehensive plan, comes straight from that. There's not, there's nothing new. So only the first four areas were new. This would then allow us at the appropriate time to amend the comp plan. Because this is in a rural zone and a rural zone does not permit this. It really doesn't. But to go to our comp plan and say in a rural zone, if it's small and you can't see it, it would be acceptable. One of the questions is why do solar farms at all? I think it is in our best interest, long term, to have an option that we can demonstrate to the general assembly that we do allow solar farms. They just have to meet what the requirements for rural community. And that's what this was really about, was trying to create a rural community field for something that, that's going to continue to come at us and come at us really in a much more aggressive way. So that, that's my story. What I would like from y'all is support. I can, I can send this to, to the planning commission and request a text amendment on my own. Okay, but to do that without your support would be crazy. Why would you do that? Okay, and so if, if, if there's support for getting solar farms categorized where we have real control over it and understand and the people coming in understand what we want, then I think this is a useful way to go. If you don't like two miles or one mile, it's, it's going to get beat up and it's going to come back to us anyway. So it is, this is to get the ball rolling. So that's, that's the end of my story, ma'am.
Three hundred and fifty acres, any rationale behind that number? Was that just?
That's because the four that have worked for us are under three hundred and fifty acres.
And then with, would this, you're still proposing it would go into the rural areas?
It would be eligible for rural areas, yes, ma'am.
CUP or permitted use?
CUP.
Still CUP?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted some clarification.
No, CUP because there, there are things to be negotiated.
Right.
Like, so much of the timber areas that they have used are those that also have some environmentally sensitive areas in them. And they need to be protected and managed appropriately. And so how you allow access and egress is always an interesting situation. And so this is just to lay out our planning staff to potential solar developers. This is where you can play in Palatine. Don't bring us a thousand acres, okay? We're, you know, it's not going to get approved.
Back to your one point, because we've gone back and forth with these a lot. And, you know, my theory, or not theory, but you know, just to throw this out. If we really don't want them, we have five of them currently.
Yes.
You know, so we have done our due diligence. I mean, take them out, you know, take them out and not worry about it. That's just another option. If we really, if it gives us angst having these, you know, we already, we've got them. How many do we want?
Madam Chair, my, my, I, I, I would love to do that, quite frankly. My concern is this, solar farms are on a trajectory, if we're not careful, same trajectory as cell towers. Where if the Commonwealth has a major push, that's part of Dominion's charge is to produce more of this. And so if we are, in the eyes of the general assembly, unreasonable, our ability to, to do exactly what you just said may be removed. I mean, cell towers of, you know, we, we can't even tell what coverage they, they provide anymore. Okay? Remember way back when with cell towers, we had one in the eastern part of the county that because we had the maps.
Yeah, we couldn't look.
We, we, we were, we were able to tell it was really for Chesterfield County, not for us.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, we can't do that anymore. So that's, that's, that's my concern is that we shoot ourselves in the foot long term by being a little too aggressive. That, that's, that's the only reason why.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
As we're looking at our comp plan update and amending or pending our use standards and our zoning ordinance, you know, with what Mr. Cox is proposing. My suggestion is that we forward this to the planning commission for their review. With the understanding that they have license to invite Mr. Cox to explain what he's proposing to them and participate in a discussion of what he's provided us with tonight. And incorporate that into their overall work and bring something back to us as part of the comp plan update and the zoning use standards update. Because everything, both of these have to go through the planning commission.
Correct.
And I know Ms. Hurt, who's chairman of the planning commission, she has ideas based on where she has another home and what they're doing down in that county. So I know it's an active discussion that's going on with the planning commission as it pertains to solar farms. So Bill, thank you for your work on this. I think these represent some really good ideas. I think the planning commission though needs an opportunity to drill down on this and get to know it, understand it. Bill, I'm sure they will give you that opportunity to come visit with them to further explain with them like you've done with us tonight.
If you don't give, if you don't, if you don't give them an option, they will.
Yeah. Myself, I'm fine with that, having the planning commission look at this and move it along. Mr. Berry, Mr. Byerley?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right.
So.
Andrew?
Mr. Smith, you will then move this forward to the.
Guys, we'll take care of it. So y'all are initiating an ordinance amendment for the use standards for solar energy farms?
No, we are initiating you, slow down. We're initiating you to have, begin the dialogue with the planning commission. You're going to take Mr. Cox's recommendations, give it to the planning commission, say, this is a starting point. This is, and he'll probably maybe come and.
If invited, I'll be happy to show up.
His feeling. All right?
Okay, okay.
Okay, moving on to the next item.
This is another item that was proposed by Mr. Cox. There was a request to discuss what portions of Palatine County, certain zoning districts should be applied. The Village Center VC zoning district, the Village Center Plan Development VCPD zoning district, Village Residential VR, Village Residential Plan Development VRPD, and then also the single family residential two zoning districts. These are the residential and mixed use zoning districts within the zoning ordinance that accommodate higher density residential development as well as mixed use development. The VC and VCPD zoning districts have been applied to certain projects in the courthouse village area as well as Route seven eleven village east of two eighty-eight. And we have not applied the VR or VRPD zoning districts to any properties yet in Palatine County. And again, Mr. Cox's. And again, Mr. Cox's information is included within the agenda packet on page 58.
Mr. Cox?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, you are the impetus of this. Would you care to?
Chase, could you put up the one that says appraisal that file I gave you? I'm going to make this simple and pretty straightforward and pretty crisp. Appraisal? Excuse me. It says, has today's date. And appraisal after. April 19. I have four slides to help you understand better. What my real interest is. All right, my interest really in this and what this is all about is high-density housing. So this is residential, okay? That's what I'm interested in. Could we go to the next slide, please? Floated up just a bit. A little history. The 1998 Comprehensive Plan and ordinances, the maximum density in the county at that point were four units per acre if you had water and sewer. That was the max that you could have. Then the 2010 Comprehensive Plan came along, and we had, from the Commonwealth of Virginia, UDA, which is urban development areas, where we were required, Mr. Berry, this was something we had no option on, okay? We were required to take our densities up, and we took them up to eight units per acre in Village Center. That condition was eliminated in 2012, so it no longer applies. You didn't have to do it. So, we never, when we got to the densities that we have in our ordinances today, they were never because we had a discussion with the citizens. We never had anybody vote to put it in. We've had vote, people vote not to take it out. Okay? And so that's still a lingering question. What do we do and what should be the size? And we had a lot of citizen input with projects. When we look at some of these different ordinances, one of the important considerations I want you to think about is the density calculation is based on the total development area, including setbacks, buffers, and open space. And so, example, on the Ellis tract of 89 acres, you could have 356 units under VR, four units per acre, or 712 units under VCPD at eight units per acre. The limitation on that really was a number of entrances, not how many, how many, okay? If you have more than, if you have 250 units or more, you have to have three entrances. Ellis could only get two. So that's why it was capped at 249. But when you take these calc, when you take these densities and you apply them against the entire acreage, they add up quickly and they get large very quickly. The second point to remember is VC, VCPD, VR, VRPD, and R2 are all village ordinances and are only, can only be used in the village growth districts. So when you're talking about that, that's the only place they can use. Our other, or other districts, like R5, can be used. There's nothing that stops that. Commerce can continue to be used. So I'm focusing my remarks tonight just on these specific areas. If you would go to page 56 and 57. Andrew's laid these out, makes, makes it easy for me. The very first one is Village Center. Mrs. Carmack, you're 100% correct. And when we're talking about the Potter rezoning, we have used VC for everything other than what it was designed for. Okay? It's been used simply because of a use or for density. Now, is four units per acre, unless you have townhouses, then your lot can be as small as 1,800 square feet. That means 24 units per acre. Okay? Once again, if you have 100 acres, the point of that is you can fit a lot of townhouses in a very small layer, area, but the total area still has to meet that four units per acre. Okay? Village Center. The only place that we've used this correctly, in my estimation, is Winterfield Place, east of 288. Obviously, y'all disagreed me, disagreed with me on the depot at Fighting Creek, and Aaron Hill really doesn't look much like a village center to me. But there you, there you have the most, some of the most aggressive densities that you can have. Village Residential, up to four units per acre. No area zone VR. The reason there's no area zone VR is because the lot size is required to be 10,000 square feet. Okay? 43,560 square feet in an acre, 10,000 square feet minimum lot size, okay? When you have open space, you can never get to four units per acre. That's the reason we've seen no activity. The activity is being driven by the search for density. And then the last one, Village Residential. No area zone VRPD, but that's where East-West was. That's what they tried to be. And there, when you get to VRPD, there is no minimum lot size. And so therefore, you can really push a lot of units into a small place. You might remember, I had asked, and, and our planning staff responded, dealing with the PD categories, the plan development categories, when we were allowing our developers to look at different options, they weren't giving us anything back. They were giving us a zero back. We were getting the minimum standard and nothing enhanced. We didn't change the ordinance on that because we said we would wait. Okay? So, these are, these are the ordinances, excuse me, not that, these are the districts that give me concern because of their ability for high-density housing. Could we go to the next slide? Why now? This is a real question. This, this is, this is, this is the Carmack question. Why do you want to do this now? Okay? One, to set the development community expectations so that they understand what we do or don't want to do. We have developers that come in all the time, like, look at our ordinances, the ordinances are there, they're live, then there's a possibility. We have that going on right now in Mr. Byerly's district. And also remember, a rejected rezoning for developer is an expensive operation. Okay? And, and as a result, they fight really hard because they've invested the money in it. Okay? Two, protect our staff resources. Working on positive projects is always more rewarding than a tussle full of conflicts. If you think about the, the apartment complex in South Creek, you think about all of the conflicts and problems that we put our staff through with East-West. These are things I would like to avoid our staff being wrapped up in. That's not, that's not a good productive use of their time. Okay? Three, this is my guess, we're looking at two years before the comp plan is finished and ordinances are written and approved. You can't start working on ordinances until we approve a comp plan. And from what I've seen of the comp plan, it looks more like Mr. Melton, Mrs. Campbell won the election than I did and Mr. Byerly. It, it looks like a prescription to get us to middle of things. I think there's going, I don't, that, that, as far as I can see, and I haven't dug into it in detail, there, we will spend some time on that. But it's going to take us a while to get this done. It really is. It took us over two years to get the ordinances written and approved last time. Now, those, I think, were more exhaustive than what we, that what we're looking at today. I hope they are. Okay? So, and fourth, this change is really, that I'm proposing is really pretty straightforward and easy. Okay? It can be accomplished in less than four months. So my interest is setting the bar for residential high-density housing at the proper level as quickly as possible. Could I have the, the last slide, please? What next? I'd like your support to move it forward. So, you, if you look on page 58, you will see exactly what I have proposed, which is to restrict Village Center, Village Center PD, and Village Residential PD to the 711 East District. And allow in the Village Courthouse District, Village Residential, which is four units per acre, which is historically what they had the option for, and R2. We can restrict these zoning districts if we, if we desire, and say where they can be used, there's no problem with that. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but that, that's?
That's your spiel.
That's my spiel, okay?
All right, discussion?
This is a little, little bigger, a little bigger to chew on than the last one.
Yeah. My angst is we're getting ahead of the, I know it's going before the Planning Commission, but I don't like the idea that this whole comp plan update, zoning ordinance update is going to take you two years. That just drives me insane. And it, I'm hoping it doesn't, but the thought of that just makes me cringe. It's?
But it's not unrealistic number.
I want to make it an unrealistic number, but I don't know if that's possible. And I'm concerned that if we, these districts may not, my guess is, these districts are no longer going to exist, or they will be radically changed when we do go and update, you know, the zoning ordinance. So are we getting ahead of everything? That, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't think we're getting ahead of anything. I think we're way behind doing something. The changes that I've suggested are fairly easy to do. They're not very involved in terms of technically how you get it done. They really aren't. And they make, make it clear what we're, where we are going. If you agree with me, if you don't agree with me, okay, I, I, that, that's a question of how you view high-density housing, okay? That's, that's, as it stands now, given the vote of, votes of this, this board, ex-Mr. Berry, who has yet to declare himself.
I'm the new guy.
I, I am the most aggressive, okay?
Anti-high-density, yes.
Yes, okay, okay. Mrs. Carmack is on the other side of me, not meaning that you're wild and crazy, and that Mr. Williams and Mr. Byerly have been somewhere in between. So, I would rather have us set clear expectations in the development community as fast as possible. The fact that these particular categories may not exist doesn't cost us anything to clarify where we want to use them now. In fact, is, if, what I really, the worst-case scenario that I see is Mr. Pompey does not have an enormous amount of extra time. The amount of time he spent on something like East-West was, is really catastrophic to what he can get done for us, okay? The other thing is, I, I really don't want to listen, I will, but I just don't want to have to hear citizens coming down the aisle one more time saying, what about this don't you understand? Haven't we told you? And so that's, those are the things that are driving me, okay? I don't see it as duplicate effort. I see it as, it's not, it's a little bit more than quick and dirty, but once again, this goes, not unlike what Mr. Williams said before, this goes to the Planning Commission. The only thing they have to do is report back to us, and they can report back and say, we don't like the idea. They can do whatever they want to do.
Right, right, right.
Okay?
And you do realize if you limit it to just 711 and 288, you essentially neuter it 100%, because they have no water and sewer down there. And that's your intent, which I realize.
Yeah, but that doesn't change today anyway.
Yeah.
Okay? I mean, that, that doesn't change that situation. I can't help, I can't put water and sewer there.
Correct, yes. So that, yeah, the, my point being is the odds of anything, you know, we, we have apartments down there. There's not going to be any more apartments down there. I mean, that, that area is done, a- as far as I see it currently.
It, it, it has a fair amount of developable land still available, okay?
With a minor flaw. No water and sewer.
Well, the real problem is not water. The real problem is sewer. No, the, the water, the water is doable. But the sewer, the sewer is not.
Okay. Do you all have any observations for others?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I ask Mr. Pompey to come to the mic?
Yes, sir.
Andrew, before I ask you one or two questions, I'd like to ask Mr. Cox, is your effort directed at the current land use plan and zoning that we have today?
No, it's, it's, it's really aimed at what historically we've wanted to do. If we go back and look before the current land use plan, we go back to?
Let me clarify, because I don't think you understood me correctly.
Okay.
Where I'm going is, and this is why I'm going to be asking Mr. Pompey, so maybe it'd be better, let me ask Mr. Pompey, and you'll understand the context of my question. Today, when people come to your office, they're looking at the future land use map and our zoning ordinances as they exist today. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That, that's what's guiding them. So my question to you, Mr. Cox, are you looking to change something today as a measure to address the points that you made earlier about staff time, resources, and things like that, such that we don't have that problem by going ahead and taking out those land use designations? Now, we got a land use designation, and we've also got a zoning district designation, which in some cases can be the same in Powhatan County. Village Town Center is one of them. Okay? So on your future land use map, we've got Village Town Centers shown today. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. So, the question I have to you, Mr. Cox, is the effort, again, directed towards amending the current Comprehensive Plan to address your concerns where we have these designations for Village Town Centers, for example, on our land use map, and where we have these zoning districts where you have the high-density residential that you just pointed out. Is that your goal, is to address those two things under the current Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance?
No, sir.
Okay?
Okay? My goal is not to get involved in the Comprehensive Plan update. That's a process that's going forward and will work its way through. My goal is to take a look at our current zoning ordinances. Not the Comprehensive Plan, but our?
I, I said current zoning as well. You know, I, I, okay, I've separated the two, sir. I'm not looking at the comp plan. I'm looking at our zoning ordinances only. And restricting those where they can be used. Now, the Comprehensive Plan update will go forward, and as a result of that, if there are changes, the ordinances will be built to support that. But in fact, what I'm trying to do is go back in time before UDAs came in and forced us to change things, where we had no residential development by ordinance in 60 East, and the maximum that you could have in the village was four units per acre.
the maximum that you could have in the village was four units per acre. So, this is a reset of the ordinances. The process will go forward. The comp plan will continue as it does, and the comp plan may... Will create whatever it creates. I'm just looking for a period of reality between now and when that happens.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but in my mind, you're still, if you're somebody, an applicant in this county, you're going to look at the future land use map under the current comprehensive plan, and you're going to do like the last applicant did, that we approved up here in a village. That designation on the future land use map was what, Andrew?
Village center.
So, as long as you still have those designations out there under the current comprehensive plan, which includes the future land use map, people are going to still come in and say, "This is open game."
No, sir.
They won't.
Not if...
I would.
You don't have an ordinance that will support that. So, the reality is you have your... As we do today, we have our ordinance and our future land use map in conflict.
Okay.
I mean, they're in conflict.
Okay, well, okay. So, let me follow through with your reasoning. Andrew, they come in and they say, "Here it is on future land use map. I've got an option on this property, and it says village town center." What are you going to tell them is the underlying ordinance that supports the village town center?
So, I guess I might change your question a little bit.
That's fine.
For example...
Everybody else does. For example, in that ordinance, it talks about you would not be able to use the village residential zoning district within the Route 60 corridor east. On the future land use map, we show village residential within the Route 60 corridor east. So, if that property they wanted to buy showed village residential on the future land use map, they would ask me what zoning district accommodates my project, and I would say there's no zoning district that would accommodate your project, even though the future land use map shows that.
Then they're left with no use for the property?
There wouldn't be a zoning district that would accommodate their projects.
How would you guide them in terms of what they should do? If there's no underlying applicable zoning districts to go to, what would you do? If you're the applicant and you're the planning director, what are you telling them?
They can't do... They can't...
I'll use the example that we just had, you know, up here in the village.
Yeah.
What do you tell Mr. Burris? What do you tell Michael Potter?
There's not a tool in the zoning ordinance that would accommodate their rezoning request. There's no zoning district they can request that would accommodate their vision for the property and what aligns with the comprehensive plan.
Wow, so then, what do you do? If I'm Mr. Burris, and I'm Mr. Potter, and I'm you, what do you all determine that you can do?
That's a good question.
I thought so. Can I get an amen?
Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams, could I answer the question?
I'm looking for an amen.
Okay. You got your amen, okay? You actually got two of them.
Call the roll.
Could I answer your question?
Please.
Okay. So, the option is RVR, village residential, that is available for that project area, which is four units per acre, which means he cannot build exactly what he wants. He's going to have to scale it back. It's going to have to look more like the other end of the village. So, there are options available. There's R2 available. But the whole... I started this off telling you, "I'm after the high-density work. I want to remove that." And you can by dealing with the ordinances, and they do still have options.
Well, I just talked to the planning director, and he didn't feel like he could provide the same options that you just provided, so we got a problem. He's the guy that's on point with the development community. He's the keeper of the rules, and if he's saying, "Well, I don't know what we can do."
Madam Chair, Mr. Pompey is, under my scheme, is VR an eligible thing for Mr. Potter?
Well, if we're talking about that previous project, VR wouldn't have the commercial component within it. I guess you could do part of the project to a commercial zoning district and part of it to a residential, but it would be one project with two separate zoning districts.
So, there are options, Mr. Williams. But Mr. Williams, the point that I'm making this evening, and what I'm looking for, is to say no to high-density projects, to say no to some developers, to say, "No, these are not some things that we want in Palatine County, in that area. If you want to build it in Palatine County, here's where you can go." So, this is about a... There's a component of that that says, "No, I don't want to do that. You're not going to be allowed to do it." If we don't do that, if we don't say no, if we don't get comfortable with saying no, we're going to look exactly like Middle Oathian Turnpike.
Well, not as long as we still have the ability to vote up here, okay? We haven't lost that, okay? We haven't lost our ability to review projects, and each one of us know what we campaigned on. And I think I'm not going to call the roll, but I think I know my colleagues pretty well in terms of how you all feel about development and what type of development in this county. My problem with what you're proposing, Bill, I think the complexities of just the discussion we had tonight, there's other things that may be out there. I think, you know, I applaud the effort, and I'm not in disagreement about the gold. I mean, people know what I campaigned on. I'm not interested in high-density residential up and down Route 60. I've said that, okay? I've said repeatedly, when we've had meetings, that I don't have any problem with scalable, higher-density residential in the village. Don't have any problem with high-density residential east of 288 on Route 711, where it's already there in parts and is waiting to develop. I don't have any problems with that. My concern has always been, "You're right. I don't want to look like Middle Oathian because we are a rural community that has to go to work every day. We get up in the morning, we drive to 288 to go to Henraco, Chesterfield, and Richmond, where the jobs are. Jobs aren't in Palatine County." So, Route 60, 711 are very important to us. So, we have to link our land use decisions, understanding what the transportation implications are. Or otherwise, you're right, Mr. Cox, we will have a problem with transportation. But I'm not willing, at this point, to make any decision about the efficacy of what you're proposing. In concept, I'm fine with it. But until we can have more complete conversations with staff in the planning commission, I'm going to be reluctant to go there, because I think we need to give this a little bit more scrubbing. Like I said, just based on what the conversation's been tonight, I'm not totally comfortable.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
But, Mr. Williams, isn't that what I'm suggesting, is that this is a starting point for the scrubbing, and that you start the scrubbing by sending it to the planning commission and saying, "Look, we really want you to take a look at this," not unlike what you just said a minute ago?
No, I'm fine with if the planning commission... I'm not sure where they're at, you know, in terms of looking at this and how they will look at it. You know, I'm looking at it as we are doing something now with the current zoning and the current land use plan, and that's the way I see it. I'm sorry, but that's the way I see it, given what I just had the discussion with Mr. Pompey and how the applicants are seeing this. The applicants are going to be looking at the future land use map, and they're going to look at our zoning districts. So, in my mind, we are looking, doing something now prior to the updating of the comprehensive plan. So, if your proposal is to send this to the planning commission for more scrubbing and for more discussion and input, I'm fine with that. I don't have any problem with that, because they're going to have another set of eyes that maybe can improve. I don't know. Or maybe can prevent us from making some mistakes. I don't know. But I don't have any problem with what you're proposing, if that's where you want to do it.
Well, and, but, I mean, that is the process, okay? That is a process, is to send it to the planning commission. The question to the four of y'all is, do you want to do that, okay? Or you just want to... You know, we've got two choices. Could we go back to that why?
Do we want to proceed now, or do we want to wait? That's...
Well, let me go back to one of the things that Mr. Williams mentioned. So, why now? And, Mr. Williams, you're right. You haven't given up your right to vote. We haven't given up our right to vote. What I'm suggesting is if we... If there was support for some or all of what I'm suggesting, that the decision that we would be making on this stage would not be a surprise, and that the energy that we expend would not be for a project that's never going to win. And so, that's what I'm suggesting, is we need to get that this is a process for getting that more in line. But it has to go to the planning commission. I think if we send it to the planning commission, you know, I have already obviously set up my expectations, okay? That's clear. That's not necessarily your expectations. But I'm unhappy with where our zoning ordinances sit today. As I told you, my concern is high-density housing. So, enough of me. It's, "What do you all want to do? Let's come to some decision and move on."
What do you guys want to do? Let's roll. What do you all... What are your thoughts? I would prefer to wait.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't think a no vote from this board would be a surprise to any developer. That's what I think. The... When I hear what you're saying, Mr. Cox, I mean, you know what I've said many times about houses on Route 60. I'm not a big fan of them. In full disclosure, the last project, the Eagle Markel, I'll be honest, I was pretty close to saying yes to that if we could have got a turn lane in the Holly Hills, from what I've seen. But that high-density, which you and I would agree, that's high-density, that was based on 55 and older. I like the fact, what Mr. Williams says, "We haven't given up our right to vote." I don't plan on giving up my right to vote. And I would just like to take this... The planning commission right now has a plate full, and we started that, I think, back in October, and we were talking about, "How long is this going to take? Can we knock this out? Can the planning commission knock it out in two or three months? Is it going to be six months? Is it going to be a year?" The comp plan, the future land use plan, I mean, does that motor ever turn off? It just keeps going and going and going and going and going. You guys have been on that planning commission, Ms. Carmack, yourself, Mr. Cox, Mr. Williams has done planning commission and Board of Supervisors. I've watched it myself, and it just... The wheels just keep turning and turning and turning, and it would be really nice if we could find some way to get an agreement and put something down that we're not going to make everybody in this county happy. We're not going to make everybody on this stage happy. But if we look at what's best for Palatine, and we've all said that high-density and no housing on 60, but one thing that I've seen, like with the Depot project, I'm not a fan of the high-density. I would agree with you on that. If we can get some business out of that, then I'm willing to... I'd like to see the opportunities before I just say no to them. That's what I'm saying. I'd like to hear the stories before I just say, "No, I don't want to want it." And I will agree with Chairwoman Carmack on the fact that if we go down to the 711 area, there's a water issue down there. And we went through that with those apartments there and every... And giving those guys adequate water supply. And I think we ended up getting something from Chesterfield. I think that's a place where if you don't have water, who's going to go there? There's definitely prime property there, but water, and then there's a sewer issue also, septic or sewer issue down there, too. So, my answer to it would be not right now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Berry?
Yes. It just feels like we're just taking a little piece where we're not going to have a comprehensive package, or cohesive package, to get away from word comprehensive, but a cohesive package. I think just the one small piece here would create more problems in the future, and I would be inclined to go no at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, you're nodding. I'm assuming you're no? Okay. Mr. Cox, you won one out of two. Moving on, the second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Please keep your comments to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman. I have two comments. The first one is, could they fix this flood spot on the Fighting Creek Trail where it keeps flooding, like by putting in a new little... Like one of those little six-inch plastic pipes and regravels a lot of the trail, because there's a lot of standing water and mud on that trail, and it's getting real messy lately for all the rain, and the creek's crossing it. Another question I have is, when they build... When they... That spot by that parking, the new courthouse parking lot, could they just raise the sidewalk up like six inches with a regular curb to keep the water from getting onto the sidewalk and the cars from getting onto the sidewalk? Because I think that if they just raised the sidewalk up by like four or six inches with a regular curb with the new paved area, it would reduce the flooding and the cars from getting on the sidewalk. Also, with the courthouse parking lot, are they going to put a new sidewalk along the other edge of it when it veers off along that side road there between the courthouse and the parking lot? Because I tried looking at the plans, and I didn't know if it included one or not.
Good evening. David Anderson, 2366 Bell Crest Circle in Palatine. First and foremost, I'd like to just thank the new supervisor, Mr. Berry, for stepping up and serving the residents of the district, too. Well appreciated. I'd like to discuss the resolution that was discussed tonight about the assessment. I don't have any comments about the merits. I'm not smart enough to know whether the proposal's good proposal, bad proposal, or somewhere else in between. However, I would like to make a couple of comments about the process. During the conversation, Mr. Williams and Mr. Byerly both used the phrase, "Do things better," which I think is a very appropriate phrase to use for all of us. So, in the spirit of doing things better, I'd like to respectfully offer two suggestions for you to gain public trust, as in my view, the assessment resolution process was not worthy of gaining public trust. First, do not include major resolutions in a workshop. Tonight's resolution was fundamental and worthy of a public hearing. A workshop is not publicly advertised. A workshop is typically sparsely attended. A workshop does not invite the public to stand and address a specific topic. You gain public trust by holding important topics in an open advertised public hearing, not somewhat hidden in a workshop, which by definition conjures up a working session, not a decision-making session. Second, trustworthy decisions are made after collecting all of the relevant information. You reference what other counties are doing, and that's a perfect example. However, you fail to include the person closest to and most knowledgeable of in the entire county, Commissioner of Revenue. Contrast that with the discussion on the parking lot tonight, where the Director of Utilities was given all the time she wanted to discuss her proposal, and she was smartly questioned on her proposal. On the other hand, the Commissioner was treated like he had no special knowledge worthy of hearing. He only had three minutes to speak, and he was initially met with a legal rebuttal and zero dialogue back and forth between the board. If a countywide elected official is seemingly given no respect, what message does that send to the common woman and man of the county? that send to the common woman and man of the county? Thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Can I remove my face covering when I address?
Yes, sir.
I don't think.
Your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Keith Book, twenty-two forty-six Branch Forest Way, Powhatan, Virginia. I don't think anybody disagrees with the fact that you do have the authority to move the real estate assessment activity from underneath the Commissioner of Revenue into a direct report to the administrator. I, I, I think what's being questioned is that this is a substantial change in the way we do business, that the, the voters had previously affirmed that they would like to keep business this way for the next four years. And you're not giving them an opportunity to speak publicly and offer their comments one way or another. I think that's very important, that a public hearing needs to be held devoted to this particular topic, to get, to get the opinion of the people that voted in the past election as to how they feel what the best way should be. And I have, you know, two questions. Did any of Jamie Timberlake's actions or lack thereof contribute to the fact that we don't have a triple A rating? Can someone answer that?
Sorry, sir, this isn't a time for dialogue back and forth, you just.
All right, but I want that, I want that to go on the record. I want to know, have any of Mr. Timberlake's actions contributed to the fact that we don't have a double A, triple A rating? It seems like a reasonable question to ask. And perhaps the attorney could ask, this is, the gentleman that was escorted out by the sheriff's deputy, he made me think of this question. Do you have the authority to abolish the Commissioner of Revenue position as a Board of Supervisors? Do they have that authority to do that? And move all of his functions underneath the administrator's office?
Again, he, we can't go back and forth. You can ask that dialogue afterward, after the meeting.
All right, all right, wait, well, quickly speaking, I'm happy to report on a happy note that the DEQ has made substantial comments regarding Green Ridge's landfill, Part A application, that will set them back quite a bit of time and cost them a lot of money, substantially delay the project. I know the chairman has worked individually to stop the Green Ridge landfill. I've given her a lot of suggestions that she's acted upon and I'm grateful for that. But I don't think the board as a whole has a plan for dealing with stopping the Green Ridge landfill. So I propose that since the administrator has, was a Director of Finance in the town that had an active republic landfill owned by Republic Services and had an active closed landfill they were dealing with, perhaps he could be tasked with coming up with a policy or plan to deal with the Green Ridge landfill.
I'm going to have to wrap it up, I'm sorry.
I would be more than happy to help him address those, because, you know, not to brag or anything, many of the substantial comments that the DEQ came back with were mine. They weren't elves, didn't submit these at night. So I have substantial experiences, he has good contacts, perhaps we could come up with a plan to effectively, you know, how we want to deal with the Green Ridge landfill? Because I think we need a plan.
Agreed. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anybody on Zoom? They're on Zoom?
Good afternoon again. Sharon Yance, nineteen seventeen Fair Oaks Road. I just, I'm disappointed in the decision that you made, but I'm always proud of you for doing the job that you do. I'm having a little difficulty adjusting to the new board and to the new administrator. And I think some of the citizens as well are learning to, or trying to learn how to trust and to be able to communicate better with you. I'm learning as well, and I've been learning ever since I've been coming to these meetings. But I do appreciate and respect you for the jobs that you do, even though sometimes I disagree. But thank you. And with these difficult times and people disagreeing on the news, you see all the time that you say the wrong thing, you turn your head the wrong way and you're in trouble, and yet you're up here in public's eye and taking at your own risk all the things that are going on in the world today, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment.
Anyone on Zoom?
No one, I asked him.
I'm sorry.
We're good. County attorney comments?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
County administrator comments? Board comments? Nope, anybody have board comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Landzing, for filling in and coming out and providing us with some good information. Public trust, that's a pretty interesting concept to me. I think it's a hard thing to earn in this position that we're in up here. But we all chose to be in this position, and you elected us to be here. So I guess we got your support in that area. Me personally, I think I spend a lot of time on Facebook, and I think everybody up here and everybody in Powhatan County probably knows that. And I'll continue to try to put my information out on Facebook to let the public know when we have meetings and when everybody will have an opportunity to speak at the meetings. Public hearing, you know, my own personal opinion of that, I think you, you've got a valid point there without any doubt. But I think a public comment is open to the public. And if the public doesn't speak, you know, it's hard for everybody to come together with, with an answer. But I do think the whole just of this board is to do things better, to do things in a way that makes Powhatan better. And sometimes, you know, you don't know what the cake's going to taste like until it comes out of the oven. And that's the way it's done with baking or the pie. Let's find out what it tastes like when it comes out at the oven. But the, the, the people that came out tonight, I truly am glad you did. I truly respect you, your opinions. And these decisions are not easy decisions that anybody takes lightly. I know that when Jamie came up, I spent a lot of time with him over the past few months talking to him and talked to him today for a long period of time. And this is by no means a slap to the Commissioner of Revenue in this county. We made a decision that we think's the best way to go for the county and hopefully the citizens who, who, who came in tonight will watch this play out and it will work out well. There will be a great finish. And if it isn't, then you change it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? All right, meeting adjourned.